I'm showing 5:30. I'm going to go ahead and get this meeting. Call to order? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Irvin?
Present.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Youth Representative? Counselor Flack?
Here.
Counselor Merity?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Semon?
Here.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would be pleased to declare the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Business from the City Council. Item A, award of South Sixth Street Water and Wastewater Extension Contract. A staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So on June 28, 2023, Cottage Grove posted an invitation to bid for extension of water and wastewater utility lines approximately 300 feet on South Sixth Street from Cleveland to the former Hillside Market site. Still bids were received at 2:00 p.m. on July 13, 2023, at the Branch Engineering, which is located at 310 Fifth Street in Springfield. The intended bid was advertised on June 28, 2023, in the Daily Journal of Commerce, and two bids were received and opened on the 13th. One from H&amp;J Construction, Inc., for $176,740, and the second was from Wildish Construction Company for $272,391.90. Bid documents were reviewed and deemed complete by Branch Engineering with the recommendation to award the contract to H&amp;J Construction as a low bidder. This work is necessary to supply city water and sewer services to 2,604 South Sixth Street where a new convenience store and gas station has been approved for construction. Council might remember this property was annexed into the city limits earlier this year, and the folks redeveloping wanted to be in the city and receive city services. So the recommendation by staff is for the City Council to move to award the South Sixth Street Water and Wastewater Extension Project and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents. The total cost of the contract is $176,740 and will be paid for by the Water and Wastewater Reserve Funds. The property owner will be contributing to the project based on the amount of capacity that they will be utilizing for that site. The additional cost will be the construction of the pipes to serve future service. We're extending capacity down as the area develops. We'll be able to handle additional development based on the size of the pipe.
Any discussion? Counselor Flack?
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council award the South Sixth Street Water and Wastewater Extension Project and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents.
Second. We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor Solzky. I'm all for paying less. I think that's awesome, but there's a $100,000 difference between these two bids. Was there any difference in how they were going to perform the work? I'm just curious.
Um, Mayor, Counselor Savage, I did receive a telephone call from Wildish Construction, and they actually, I talked to both parties. Wildish Construction factored worst-case scenario into their bid, and H&amp;J Construction, they actually extended the services to that point, so they're familiar with the stratus or the conditions that are out there, and felt pretty confident they could do the job because of their experience knowing of us there. So I think the difference between my understanding of the bids were, one was pretty sure they know what they're getting into, and the other one was we're going to be factoring potential things they don't know.
Anyone else? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Semon?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Counselor Flack?
Aye.
Mayor Solzky?
Aye. Motion carries. Item B. Grace West LLC Cleveland Street Property Purchase Staff Report by Public Works Development Director Fay Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just go through this, and then I'll expand on it somewhat more out of the item. So on June 12, 2023, City Council held an executive session where staff brought this opportunity to potentially purchase 61.06 acres of R2 zone property from Grace West Properties LLC. The property is for sale for $2.8 million. After discussing the potential purchase, the council came back into regular session and gave direction to pursue purchase of the property. Purchase of the property would allow the city to design and install the necessary roads, water, sewer, and storm infrastructure to support the development of the property for housing and potentially industrial development. Once the infrastructure needs are designed for the site, the remaining property, approximately 55 acres, will be resold. Staff has been working with the A Davison Banner Bank and legal counsel on selling bonds to cover the purchase. The bond sale would take approximately six to eight weeks to complete. Staff has also been working with legal counsel to prepare this proposed purchase and sale agreement for your consideration. And attached is that purchase and sale agreement, and the potential closing date would be the end of September, on September 30, 2023. So I would just wanted to share, council heard a lot of this information in the executive session, and so I just want to reiterate it. So presently, right now, in the city, we have a need for industrial land. Approximately 20-acre parcels or larger. Presently, the largest parcel that we have for sale in Cottage Grove for industrial land is six and a half acres, which we have in the industrial park. We've received, since I've been here in the last seven years, we've probably received at least one to two acres a year for businesses that like to locate or consider locating in Cottage Grove. But there, we haven't been able to accommodate them because of the size of property that they need. In fact, we have had specific requests for 25 acres with rail access, which this piece of property could potentially accommodate if they could get a siding from the railroad. It could be developed by others. We have an inquiry right now that we've been working with that would potentially accommodate 70 new jobs and a significant investment if they can purchase 20-plus acres. So there is definitely a need for that and being able to create jobs in our community. Additional needs that this council has discussed multiple times is affordable housing, available land for affordable housing and middle-income housing. And presently, right now, we need additional single-family lots. We, so far this last year, we have committed seven single-family owners to this community, and my understanding, talking to folks that would like to locate in this community, is that the reason they're not able to locate is we just don't have available lots. Having said, there is a related 23-lot subdivision that has just been sold and moved forward with installing infrastructure, so those lots should be available. But it certainly doesn't meet our buildable lands inventory needs for our community or projected growth of 69 units per year. So that's a combination of multifamily and single-family lots. So this piece of property would accommodate, there's a parcel, it's 26.7 acres, that would make sense to consider to rezone onto industrial land, which is what we would propose to do. I'm prepared to start that process. If council moves forward, we would start it this month, and the council, I believe, or planning commission in September for the proposal to start the rezone. What we would also propose to staff is that we would look at bringing in a consultant to look at the remaining 36 acres, which we think could produce 20 to 25 acres of property that could be developed for residential units. We'd bring in a consultant to look at how those, how that property could be parcellized so that we can meet the goals of the council, which is affordable housing and multifamily housing and single-family lots. We would bring those proposals back to council to make sure that we hit exactly what the council would like to see happen with that property. So we believe that this piece of property would meet those needs. We also believe that it would pay for itself, and the potential income that could be derived from selling the remaining property could, we believe, cover the additional costs necessary to make road improvements, put in the infrastructure necessary so that the developments could be shovel-ready. Right now, if we, what I heard over the seven years that I've been here, this piece of property has been for sale for a considerable amount of time. There's been multiple developers that have come in and talked to us about the potential to build, and really been two sticking points that I think is the reason why this property hasn't sold is the owner wants to sell it all in one piece. They live back in New York. It's hard to manage a development from back there, so this person would like to see it sold all in one chunk. The problem with the chunk is that developers come in, they're a little bit unsure of what's going to be needed to develop property, you know, what type of infrastructure is going to be needed to put in, and they're also, because right now, the 26.7 acres is landlocked without road access to it presently, and not knowing when a bridge could be built and the price of the bid bridge to get in there, to get to that point. Really, there's some unknowns that developers really are wanting to take the risk on. So we think that, I believe, staff believes that we could make these changes, install the infrastructure necessary, and the proceeds that would be made from the sale of the parcels would pay for those improvements. I think Mr. Mongan has done some research and given some thoughts to the amount of housing units that could be available on the R2 dedicated land. Do you care to share those with the council?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Stewart said, just some back-of-the-napkin calculations, accepting out area for open space, parklands, right-of-way, et cetera. As he said, 22, 25 acres. When we're looking at our current development code standards, while the minimum densities might lean more towards, you know, something like four units per acre for R1, eight units per acre for R2, and then 14 for R3, what we've been seeing more often is actually a much more dense pattern of development. And so as Mr. Stewart mentioned, we'd be looking at, through the process of working with a consultant, maybe a landscape architect or firm like that, that will actually look at the topography specifically and identify the more appropriate areas to cite, different housing types and things like that. We'd run it through a master plan process, basically set up the whole area with an overlay on how and where and what, which would allow for, kind of bake the cake with an expectation of a minimum number. I believe I've referenced some of these numbers recently in regard to some of our other projects, but just one more time. Harrison Village Apartments, 3.2 acres, 80 dwellings, that's 24 units per acre. That's three times the minimum for that zone. I think that you would find that there's quite a bit of open space on the property that have a pool and a clubhouse, room for covered parking, things like that, to accommodate and meet the code standards. Gateway Apartments, two acres, 40 units, 20 units per acre again. Only needed to be 16, and they hit 40. So we can, we see that it's doable. We see that developers see the value in building that densely here in Cottage Grove. And so we're, I'm confident, staff's confident, that that would continue. Did a real quick analysis of the high-rise, the Housing Authority, there's 60 apartments in there, and that parcel is only 1.54 acres. So, you know, it's 40 units per acre, good to take. Again, you know, it's got to be the right place with the right adjacent services in order to support something like that, but absolutely, that would be the kind of thing that we would look for. Not creating a neighborhood of one housing type, but of all types for all residents of Cottage Grove, so that way we can retain high school kids that want to stay in town or multi-generational, you know, down the street grandma lives in a townhouse or something like that. And so the target number of new dwellings for that residential site, that's the east side of the coastal, would be around 450 dwellings.
Any questions? Counselor Semon?
Thank you. Have any of the details or the parameters of this changed since we saw it?
Counselor Semon?
I don't know if it's okay. Are there ways to encourage affordable housing, make sure we get some there?
Yeah, so on that, that's where the master plan will come into play, when we're looking at the whole site as a system. We'll want to, again, we don't want to create a neighborhood of this and a neighborhood of that. We want to create, you know, a spread, much like Cottage Grove is already. And so I would say, as we go through that process, working with a consultant and working through planning and through the council, we'd find a number that council liked for percent of that 450 being affordable. Percent of that being market rate, a percent of that even being high-end, right? It's a beautiful location along the river. There's a nice little hill there where you could have some daylight basement-type development, things like that. So really, you could have the whole mix of housing types, but absolutely, we would want to target a number that's, say, X amount has to be regulated for.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor. My, I think there's at least two things. One of the elements that was exciting to me in the proposal of this process was that we could use the land as a funding mechanism for where we have shortfalls, particularly, potentially the street fund, as one of the creative ways. What I'm hearing tonight is that the profitability element could be used to get it shovel-ready on that site. So that's a departure, I guess, from my perception of it. Can you, maybe we can speak more to that, and if there is still potential that it be a profitable operation beyond the actual site? Then my second question pertains to the master plan process. We have a MUPD. When you master plan something, does that make it available to apply for a MUPD for the master plan? Even if it's single-dwelling homes sprinkled in there as part of it?
Mayor, Counselor Irvin? No. And I would point out that right now, only the northernmost parcel, which I believe is about 14 and a half acres, could benefit from the MUPD under its current mapped configuration of being a quarter-mile from lane transit route. The MUPD is very specific out of statute as to what it pertains to and would allow. What the master plan would do is really just go back to the uses, you know, the types of housing in certain areas. So that would, you know, if we wanted to say, okay, this one-acre plot, we'd really want to see that 25 units or more, because it's right next to, maybe there's a little three-unit commercial space, you know, where you could have your barber, your lawyer, and a bottle shop or something like that, I don't know, near a service. That's what the master plan will do. It's wholly separate from the MUPD.
So does a master plan effectively impose upon any developer, saying you need to develop within this master plan?
Yes. Yes, it would. But that's why we would want to, you know, go through a rigorous public process. I would imagine that that would include potential developers. Certainly, at least, we'd want to have in the room folks like your Square Ones and your Housing Authority and things like that, so that we can understand, you know, what their needs are in order to encourage them to develop here as well.
Thanks.
Mayor, I'd like to address Counselor Irvin's question about the revenue. So mind you, I've just taken comparables from what has sold property values that have sold in our community over the last four years. And the industrial parkland has been selling for $3.00 to $3.50 per foot. I project, on the low side, the industrial land, those 20-plus acres would be generating anywhere from $2.6 to $4.3 million in revenue for just those acres. And then the remaining, I figured 25 acres is a 35 by the time you take out conservation and have some open space and various different things. But that would generate somewhere between $5.5 to $7 million. So between the two, you got a low-side total revenue of $8 million to a total of almost $11.5 million. And that's provided that we get market rates and that we have buyers. They don't want to go out there and, you know, put it in the bank and count it, have we got it for this or that. But I, council might remember that we acquired bridge beams from ODOT, so we required at least $1 million of the cost to build a bridge. We verified through our verification process that the bridge beams would work, it would reach from high watermark to high watermark, which will reduce the requirements necessary for many time, various different things that tend to cause projects to cost so much. So I can't tell you what that bridge is going to cost. It might be a $3 million bridge to build. And then by the time you put in the rest of the infrastructure, there could be some resources left over, but I also don't want you to think that we're going to have a bunch of money that we can spend somewhere else, but hopefully, that's the case. The other thing I'd like to share with you, too, is that the revenue to bridge the gap from the time of purchase to the time that we're able to actually sell it, will be, the debt service will be paid for by the utility funds that are dedicated to pay for the water right-of-ways and the street right-of-way, the land that's necessary for us to put city infrastructure in there and the conservation land. So I believe that we'll have enough money to service that for two years if it takes that long. I think that we'll be able to market this property within a year and start selling that, and hopefully, we won't not have any concerns on the debt service over the next three years of trying to get some money to pay for it.
The other thing I want to note, too, in answer to some of Counselor Irvin's questions, is the state legislature, DLCD, has been trying to get cities and counties to encourage and develop housing by mandating changes to their development codes. You can't require parking lots. You can't do certain things. This is a different approach. This is more of a partnership approach with the development community, where we're taking an active role in helping to formulate and shape what we want to see happen for development and for housing in the community, and partnering with them, trying to get rid of some of those risky points that they are challenged with or have an issue with, and then move those forward. Here's a piece of property that hasn't had anything happen to it for 10, 15, 20 years, and we have an opportunity to move forward and actually get homes built on it, and homes in the types that we need in the community.
Mr. Stewart, could you elaborate a little bit more on the company, or are you able to speak to that and how sure we are that this company will eventually come into our community? And also, how many jobs, could you repeat that, that they would be bringing, and what type of company? Can you speak to that?
Well, I'll give you a high review. We have a company that's inquired with the city, looking for 20 acres to site a manufacturing facility. That would start with 70 jobs. They say that they're starting salary at $60,000. So they're good jobs. They check in, this individual checks in a couple different times a week to see where we're at in the status. So I try to keep the person informed. This property would have to be successful in the rezone. We believe we can make a compelling case to rezone it, but there's no guarantee that, you know, we have that as a shoe-in, so we have to go through the process and make the case. We will probably have some level of state scrutiny from Housing Authority or housing advocates, make sure that this is done properly, because you're taking housing land and converting it to industrial. So it's not signed up. The company that would like to locate here will need to get additional permits, so they'll have to go through other permitting processes. We believe that what they want to locate there is permissible under city code, so there would be really no special requirements other than a variance for a couple items that would be out of our, I guess, our restrictions. What they want to do is permit it in the land use zone. So I feel pretty confident that the company wants to locate here. They, I'll be honest with you, the reason they want to locate here is because of the experience that a couple of the land use attorneys have had permitting projects in this community the last five years, and they feel confident that they will be treated with the best ability to hopefully get favorable willing. So they want to be here because of what we've done over the last five years here in this community and our community development.
Is there a possibility of looking into zoning before, rezoning before we purchase?
We've already done some pretty extensive. In fact, this piece of property that we are, the portion of the property that we want to rezone, there's actually, there was a development agreement between the Livers and the city back years ago, and when this property was to be annexed into the city, it was to retain its industrial zone, but it didn't for some reason. We believe that we can make a compelling case to meet the requirements and feel pretty confident that we can achieve that more with that.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor Solzky. One of the things that I think we desperately need here in Cottage Grove is really, really affordable housing, which is a much lower pay scale than just that typical affordable housing. One of the barriers that I've noticed is the cost of the land or the price of doing business with the property owner who this nonprofit would like to purchase from. So I would like to see that we save a little nugget and help facilitate a really low-income component so that we can get some availability for this. So I know that you guys are taking that into consideration, but I'd like to put an emphasis on it. I think it's really important.
Counselor Flack?
So in my time as a planning commissioner and city councillor, the mixed-use master plan, whatever we're calling it now, used to be PUDs, and those were always brought forward by the developer. And it seems a little interesting that the city's thinking about doing them. My concern with that is that we will do something that does not fit what a particular developer's looking for, and therefore, kind of shoot ourselves in the foot. And so I guess, I'm not saying I'm against doing that, I just think that, boy, having developers at the table is going to be really critical, because it needs to be advantageous for the development to happen. So that's something I really want us to be conscientious about.
So, Mayor, Counselor Flack, I don't know if I'm promoting master planning in a different light, but I think that it's important that the city go through the process to plan that area as the local council would like to see it, percentages of the land. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mongan, but I don't think we're getting into the point where we do the master plan details like we did with Bohemian Park while we didn't along the pieces of items that are going to be incorporated into that development. This is more looking at 35 acres of land. Where are we going to put a trail along the river? Where are we going to have, we're going to have land there that's, maybe it's got some trees on it. Maybe it's a little sloped, doesn't look like it's really developable for housing. It might be better to have this conservation land. Where are we going to put Fourth Street in? Is Fourth Street going to go through in a particular plan or is it going to get moved a little bit? Where would we locate a pump station? Those are the type of details of the planning that I'm envisioning that we're going to go through. And then work with the council to say, okay, five acres of this property, we really think, because it'll produce 200 affordable housing units, we want this area, that five acres dedicated to affordable housing or whatever. So I'm hoping that that helps.
So we're not actually subdividing and going through the whole process then? Okay. Well, I feel a whole lot better about it because once you set that, it makes it much tougher to change later. I guess that's, that was my concern.
Phase, or excuse me, Mr. Stewart's correct on that. It's, so in our current code, the master plan is actually a two-part process. There's a design conceptual and then a detailed development plan. We would be looking at the conceptual of the site, given information about topographic data, you know, soil types, things like that. We want to make sure that we're getting the highest best use out of the land. We're not putting a road somewhere that it could be built less expensive, more expensive, things like that. As far as creating, you know, new units of land, yes, that will occur by dedication of right-of-way. The partial shapes are going to change in, you know, park space, et cetera. But no, we won't necessarily be looking at a true subdivision or something.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Irvin.
Thank you. But it sounds like the, if you want to do such a mixed-use thing, you're going to probably be dealing with multiple developers on that same, well, one probably separate for the industrial land. Mentioned the, mentioned the square one village types for extremely low income. I can conceive of potential conflicts of, you know, what, what values could be assigned or what kind of development could happen when properties, depending on how they're arranged and space and division and all that? How do you envision that process going? And does that jeopardize or delay the ability to, to make money back on this deal?
Mayor, Councilor Irvin, you know, it's, that one's a difficult one to nail down. There's a lot of questions I wouldn't be able to answer. I would say though, from a professional planner's perspective, that you don't want to create areas that are set aside, right? Like so that income type lives on that side of Fourth Street and this income type lives on that side of Fourth Street or something like that. You want to actually go more towards the aesthetic versus the type. So this would be more like a form-based code, if I can be a little bit more theoretical, in that, you know, it's really trying to extend the look of, the feel of Cottage Grove as it is already in town, just to the south. You know, whether it's over here in the northwest neighborhood where we have Housing Authority with 60 apartments and six floors across the street from, you know, a house that was built in 1901, things like that. I mean, we already do have a pretty good mix throughout the city, whether it's Sixth Street or Gateway or Ostrander or wherever. And we just, you know, really it's just kind of a way to codify that so that we can ensure, you know, do our best effort to maintain that quality that people enjoy about Cottage Grove. And so I, like I said, I don't know how that pencils at the end of the day. But from examples, as I mentioned with the developers that we've been working with, over the last couple of years, I just feel like they see value in that. We've seen true townhouse development. We're seeing more of a duplex-style house development that's townhouse development. Of course, multifamily, we've done detached multifamily cottage clusters that we've really kind of seen the whole gambit. And I believe that that would continue, just as it has been the last couple of years, and be reliable.
Councilor Stenett.
Thank you. Forgive me if we've gone over this. Is there commercial zoning as part of this?
Mayor, Councilor Stenett, I would like there to be. You don't put 450 dwellings, maybe, you know, a couple thousand people in an area without some kind of something. Now, of course, the item that you all approved just a minute ago will, you know, allow for the convenience store to be redeveloped there at Hillcrest Market and a gas station, so there will be some enhanced services nearby. But, you know, if we're trying to encourage people to walk and bike and do those things, it's a long way to Safeway. It's not really that long, but there's a perception that it's a ways away. I'm not saying another Safeway should be down there, but maybe, you know, a local retail market or something like that. Something, some service to get to in order to, you know, keep people there and bring people in. And that could be achieved through the master plan.
Thanks.
Speaking of more people, I've heard some concerns from citizens about traffic flow. Could you speak to that on Sixth Street and 99, how it'll be dispersed?
Mayor, there certainly will be more traffic flow. And that's why we would want to do as much as we can to counter that. I think we've all seen that there's a shift in the economy from working at home and things like that. So obviously having fiber pulled in as part of the infrastructure that the city endeavors will be a component of that to try and, you know, make it a place where you can live and work. Additionally, I would say, you know, with this quantity, we're looking at, Fourth Street's not a great example. Of course, it feels like a narrow road with the school. But there would be a point of entry and exit there at Fourth Street. And then, of course, we're talking about the crossing of Cleveland to 99 and then Sixth Street. So I, oh, and Kathleen, which is there on the six. So there's a couple of different points of entry and exit. As we're going through this, certainly we will be looking at things like doing a traffic study because we need to inform whether or not there needs to be a signal and intersection. I don't want to name one specifically because I don't know, I'm not a traffic engineer. But anytime you develop this much land, there's a traffic study involved. There's going to be a traffic analysis done for the industrial rezone. I would say for that 25 acres, that's actually a reduction in trips per day based on its current zoning of R2. Generally, industrial uses, unless they're like a UPS hub or something like that, have lower trips per day than multifamily does. So the successful rezone of 26 acres on the west side of the coast fork will actually reduce what's already, could be there with or without the city's input. So I think that's, there will be a balance there. And in addition to that, this property would then get us moving closer to the implementation of our transportation system plan where Gateway, R Street and Cleveland create part of that loop that then connects back to Maine or back to other major access points. So it creates a major arterial or a major collector there to help disperse the traffic in different directions to get to downtown or get to the freeway.
Councilor Irvin.
So to gel my concern, I guess, I'm concerned that we could do this project at a loss. And the justification would be because we're putting in extremely low-income housing. I feel like that might be where we wind up, we potentially could be. And I'm very, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned at the opportunity loss of, of that being the primary, of primary factor in, you know, how we, how we approach this whole thing. I'm very excited about living wage, jobs, new industry, an expansion of the tax base on the commercial front as well as the residential, higher supply of multiple types of housing. But I, yeah, I'd want to like target at a minimum break even in the consideration. I don't know how to craft that, craft those guardrails, but that is my concern.
Councilor Savage.
Thank you so much, Mayor Solzby. I may have heard something different, so maybe clarification would be better. But my understanding is that if we were to purchase the parcel as one parcel as the seller wants and this business comes in and purchases the 26.7 acres, that covers the purchase of the entire thing. And so we're breaking even. We're not at a loss. So I don't understand the, I could have misunderstood. So I don't understand the loss aspect.
There's still a substantial amount of development that would go in to the land to make it attractive to a developer. And then you have that concept of what, what will a developer pay? And that's going to be based on the earning potential of that property. And if you undercut your earning potential by stipulating certain types of development, be certain percentages, you make it less and less attractive and then the purchase price goes down, but you still have the same infrastructure development costs to make it ready.
So I'm having flashbacks of when I lived up in Portland at OHSU, working up at OHSU, and they were just building the CHH building, which is this giant incredible building for healthcare. And there's all these empty lots ready for apartments. And right now, that's like amazing prime waterfront property, and it's just boomed in the last 15 years. Now, I'm not saying this is going to boom, but the potential, I think, is higher than that risk.
I just wanted to, Mayor, just make a statement. My experience, as I served on what was Pax, the housing authority now, it's Homes for Good. They purchase the property at market rate and then they go. And where they're successful in creating affordable housing is they go to, can qualify for head loans, development money and various different things. I mean, the council could consider, you know, a reduced price to somebody like that to get them to buy the property. You don't have to give them the property. You don't have to sell it at a discounted rate for them. They, but for somebody to build affordable housing and tap into the federal funds that are available for the development of it, to actually build it out and then support the people that live in it, it needs to be an entity like that. What you, Councilor, or the city would not receive for, would be property taxes because there are property taxes exempt on that fortunately. So it's not going to be the development or the sale of the property that you would be considering potentially to discount. It's the taxes, the ongoing tax payment that we would receive for a development like that.
Councilor Drury.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I really appreciate the visionary nature of this project because here's an example where government can do something that private developers have seen, we've seen they're not really willing to do by this one parcel of land that has industrial and residential housing zoning on it and do all the things to it. But we, as a city, we could bond to pay for it. We would take on the initial risk, so to speak, of putting in the bridge, the infrastructure, and then show that we are a business-friendly community that industries want to come to. I think that's really important, understanding the history of our city and our geography of a timber town mining where you used to be, you got out of high school and you could get a living wage job, working. And that's not, it's not as easy anymore. So the more we can incentivize industry to come here, the better. What's compelling to me is Director Stewart saying he gets calls from developers once or twice a year looking for these large parcels of industrial land and we just don't have it. So that tells me there's a market out there for something like this. And at the same time, we understand we need housing of all types. The master plan, just level one, as I would call it, gives us control to meet our housing goals and we get to decide the percentage and mixed income all in one lot. That is shown to be like what works, what helps communities grow is when you have people of different incomes living all near each other, your community will thrive. So I appreciate the visionary nature of this project where really government is probably the only one who would do this. And if we do end up at a loss at some point, I would say it would not be a loss. We would have gained 400-some units of housing, 70-plus living wage jobs. And then like that's the investment a city makes in its communities to be business-friendly, promote industry and have control over what's happening in our city. So I appreciate the forethought of staff. That's just another reason I'm so proud to live here is like this, look at what we, like so amazing ideas and forethought and creativity coming from our staff.
Councilor Fleck.
So I actually appreciate all the comments I've heard, both from Councilor Drury and Irvin. And I have to say, I think we can achieve all. I don't want to see the city lose funds. And so I do appreciate the guardrails comment. And I think we can set that up right here with staff by saying, you know, because this property has tremendous potential. I mean, I don't think at this point we're even talking about a loss. I think the future, when we're going to still have more decisions to make, is where that is going to come into place. And, and I agree, I think there's a balance in doing what we can. But I worry especially when we're using water, wastewater funds. Our rates are already huge. I think we need to be very careful about how we develop this and make sure that we're, you know, good stewards of the city's dollars. So that being said, I think there's huge potential here. So I think staff is hearing those concerns. And I think when we come forward, if we can keep our global picture in place as far as what is, you know, the end result, you know, when we're down the road and we're selling this piece, how does that impact that overall picture? That would be my request, is that staff can kind of keep that global, you know, piece in there so we can look at it.
Councilor Mary Day.
As one of my duties, I serve on the Lane Workforce Council, and I can confirm that there's a desperate need for industrial lands as is workforce housing. So this would answer both, both potentials. I think it's a very, very good move on the city's part to promote it and would support it fully.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Tomlin, I didn't flag the motion necessarily correct, necessarily correct. I'd like to add to, if council decides to move forward and make a motion to, if city manager, the authorities sign an agreement, please add in there the real estate purchase and sale agreement to purchase the 16 acres. I didn't add the sale under, you know, the portion of the sale. So if you could include that in the motion, I would be happy to make the council happier.
Thank you. We have citizens signed up to speak.
I think so.
Lynda Olson.
Lynda Olson, 1305 Gerard. I brought a lot of questions today. You answered quite a few. I still have some concerns about the urgency of this after the property's been for sale for, what, 10 years? And in June, it was decided that we have to buy this property. One of my concerns is it's a large enough purchase. I believe that the new city manager should have time to review it before he's committed to, but the citizens haven't. The citizens haven't specifically backed. They've not had a choice in voicing an opinion on it. It's pretty new. So in recognizing the current real estate market, it's stagnant due to the current interest rates, I have concerns. Is the property within the city limits? I haven't looked at that. The information that I was seeking has been provided with the council as to why they approved the purchase. But I still believe that because of the high dollar amount, it needs to be addressed by the new city manager. And who is interested in developing the industry? I can understand the need for an investor. We've been trying to draw it for a while, but I think that it's a hail mary at this point. What's the return on the investment for the citizens who are going to paying this bond? It's going to take, what, six weeks to pull the bond together? It will purchase, the property would be purchased before it can even be voted on by the people in November. And the city has a proven track record of failed maintenance on the existing infrastructures. We're trying to catch up, but we really need to take care of what we have in place before we take on hail marys to bring in new industries. There will be additional bridge building expenses for the railroad over the river, property purchases, DEQ mitigation issues over the river. So and what is the potential for the master plan changing so that it's one zoning? And then it's changed to another one to fit somebody else's criteria? It's kind of a bait and switch as to what's going on. And I'm concerned about that. As a community member, I'm looking for a return on my investment. And 2.8 million is a lot of money considering the economic situation we're in right now. Yeah, we need low-income housing, but we need jobs to help those low, the people who need low-income housing pay those bills. So what's the return on the existing purchases of the Douglas property and the Highway 99 site property? Who really benefits at this point in it? So basically, I think we need to take care of our infrastructure, get something to actually put our teeth into before we dedicate 2.8 million for a piece of property that's been on the market for 10 years and it was just decided in the last two months to purchase it. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Janice Kosch, I'm sorry, thank you.
I am Janice Cogle. I'm the president of Kathleen View's Homeowners Association, which butts up next to the backside of this development. Kathleen View's goes right off of Sixth Street and goes right at this time dead ends into that property. Both sites of Kathleen View's have private roads, which our HOA supports. They're not as wide as city roads and that's why they're private. The city doesn't want to take them on because it is not built to the city's standards. We need a guarantee that our roads will be protected from all of this building from and the traffic on Kathleen because we're paying for these roads, not the city, not just general public who might be wanting to use it. And another thing is that we're very concerned about the traffic on Kathleen Drive that goes into this development and how it will increase if there isn't any other exit that you keep talking about a bridge. Because if you start developing before a bridge is developed, that means Fourth Street, which is another little tiny street, would go into this development and Kathleen Drive, which will bring a lot of traffic on Kathleen Drive and Sixth Street. So I think that's something that really needs to be considered here. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Any more discussion on that?
I wasn't clear on the Kathleen Drive piece. There's a private section, maybe we could.
Patrick.
I'm Mayor, Counsel Irving. Essentially, Sixth Street, there's Kathleen Loop and then there's.
Patrick.
Patrick and Kathleen. So Kathleen is kind of like perpendicular to Sixth Street and it dead ends into this piece of property. It's been built to city standards. It was built to city standards and requested because this piece of property was zone R2 at the time and in the city limits. So it was, it was required to be built to city standards in case it needed to take traffic. The Loop section is substandard. We did an extensive amount of looking into this over the last couple of years. And it actually offered to the homeowners association to make the request to council to bring it into city ownership and maintain it. But they chose to keep it who it was. You'd have to purposely, one dead ends into cul-de-sacs. I can't imagine anybody from this development driving into the cul-de-sac and dead ending. And the other portion of the road has what the main concern with the city staff has is that it's a 90-degree corner, which is very sharp and limited vision. So I can't say that people wouldn't use it to get there, but it doesn't seem practical that people would purposely drive that way to enter into this potential development if it's a road that's designed to incorporate it into the master plan of the site.
So that really would be in the master plan consideration where the connector's within the development and then that would.
Before the traffic study, it would be incorporated into the potential development of the site.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I'll try. Mayor. I would move, I move that the staff I move that the council authorized the purchase and the agreement to purchase the 61.06 acres from Grace West Properties LLC for $2,800,000 and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement as well as the real estate sale agreement for that 61.06 acres.
Second.
We have a motion with the second. Any other discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Counselor Simmons.
Aye.
Counselor Dray.
Aye.
Counselor Urban.
Aye.
Counselor Flack.
Aye.
Counselor Mary Day.
Aye.
Mayor Solzbi. Aye. Motion carries.
All right, we have another citizen signed up to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. And I was informed that during a special session. So we'd like to invite you to come back and speak at the next meeting. Thank you. All right, item number C, Discussion of City Manager Recruitment Process, Staff Report by the City Manager, Richard Myers.
So you've had some information provided for you. And one of them is the LLC's Guide to Recruiting a City Administrator. We have a, want to kind of step through the first little section of this guide because I think that's got the most important questions that we need to have the council to consider and be ready to start moving forward in some way. I've also given you some more samples of recruitments that are out there right now. You've got the City of Sandy, Yahats, Heffner, it just came out. And also one from Southgate, California. Just to kind of show you the difference in what recruiters are doing and how they're making some of that information available. Bob Murray is one organization. They do a lot of stuff just in California. They really don't do things in Oregon. The Two Profmans, the GMP and the Profman, they do a lot of Oregon and Washington. And then Jensen Strategies does a lot of Oregon and some of Southern Washington as well. You also have the League of Oregon Cities that does recruitment, not the league, but both the Lane Council of Government through their Personnel Institute does recruitment as well, as well as the Mid Willamette Valley COG, they do recruitment too. But in looking at the recruitment guide and stepping through that, I think there's a bunch of different varieties of ways you can do the recruitment. You can do it in-house, you can do it yourself, you can have our staff do it. We're currently trying to fill police department positions and other positions that are going on. We have a lot of projects on our plate. There's some pros and cons. If you look at page five of the guide, it talks about some of those pros and cons associated with the different techniques of doing recruitment. Typically, your third party, we'll call them third-party recruitment organizations, have a wider net. They know how to get ahold of, they're a part of some of the city management organizations. They interact with other communities. They know and monitor what's going on with other communities and their managers as well. So they kind of have an idea of what's out there and how to get that message out. They also know some of the best publications, the best ways to advertise and promote that material. They can do screening. You'll get 20, 30 applications. 10, 15 years ago, if you were doing a city management recruitment, you could get 100 applications. And probably more than 75 of those 100 would be ones that don't meet the qualifications. They can do that initial screening and sit down with the council and say, what are the things that you have to have so that we can make some choices for you so you don't have to do that part? And they can speed up that process. They also know the new employment laws. There have been a lot of changes in personnel regulations over the last couple of years, the last five years or so. Things that you can ask, things you can't ask, things you can have on the application material, things you can see. And they can help protect the city in making sure that you're following those requirements. Our staff can do that as well, but it takes time. And by having a third party, that's another piece of the approach. You've got somebody who's dedicated to doing just that while the rest of the city operations continue to operate. It's going to take some time. I'm anticipating that you're probably going to be working on this for the next six months before you'll have somebody on staff. So you've got a lot of things that are happening that you need to make sure continue to happen. And that's one of the reasons to look at a third party. You can, one of the other pieces is they're very familiar with what's the market and what the market's doing. We have a compensation study that we're doing right now on our non-reps. There's also a piece of that that includes a city manager position. Our city manager position with the salary that it's currently at is below the maximum salaries or just barely above the entry-level salaries of our comparable cities around the state. So those are things that a consultant can help you through. Typically, what happens is a consultant will come in and sit down with the council and put together, they have samples of descriptions, you have your own job description here that's 20-some years old. And you have those opportunities to sit down and reevaluate that, find out what you want to do, how you want to move forward with that. They then do a profile of the community, they do a profile of candidates, they prepare a package to where, what you see in those publications, where you start lining it out how and what kind of a position and candidates you're looking for and can help you through that process. Do want to give you some heads up? I'm suggesting and recommending that you look at the third party. I think our staff could do it. We did a really nice brochure for the police chief position, but it takes a lot of time. And there's a lot of work that has to go into that process. So this is kind of one of the first decisions you need to decide on. If you do want to do a third party, we would go out, put together some RFPs and some requests for proposals, ask them to come and give a proposal to the council, those that are interested in doing the recruitment with you. And you'd be able to sit down with them and evaluate which one you wanted to have help you through the process. I do want to let you know, though, that I have been visited by some of the recruiters. Two of the firms have contacted me and asked me what I'm doing after retirement because they'd like to have me as one of their consultants. So I'm putting that out there for you, but that's not associated with whichever one you might pick. But I do think this is your best approach to continue to do some of the big projects. We've got the grant projects that are going on from Main Street, the project for the property, rebuilding the police department and doing that recruitment that we can concentrate on and keep our staff moving and working on rather than trying to do this one. And it gives you a better handle, be working directly with a consultant on it and run that one. Whether you use ElCOG, whether you use one of the Profmans, whether you use Jensen Strategies or you find another organization out there that is willing to help you through this process, but I think that's your best approach. In addition to finding someone to do, and that's something you need to do right away. And I would suggest that you, if it's okay with the council tonight, that you give us direction to put together some information and go out and request for third parties to come in and do a proposal. The other piece you need to think about is how are you going to continue to keep things operating after October 1st? How are you going to put together an interim? Do you want to get on the, get the list from the League of Cities or find somebody to fill in? Do you want to use some of our staff? 26 years ago, they used staff, they rotated it around. Public Works Director Bob Sisson was acting interim for a month or two months. Even Gary Ackley, the city attorney, was interim for a month or two, as well as the finance director. You have Ray Stewart, our Public Works and Community Velvet Director, that would be great to act as an interim for a short period of time. Jake would do well, Bert would do well, she's been an administrator before. So you have some handful of staff. It might be wise to have somebody that's on the list that could come in every once in a while and just check and see how they're doing. That may be something to consider. Those are the big decisions that need to be made now so that you can start, we can start putting some stuff together to give the information for you so you can then make the real decisions and move forward. And that's probably pretty much all I wanted to talk about tonight so you can chat more and discuss more how you want to handle that. We don't want to get into the selection process or how you're doing the recruitment because that's something that if you do go with a consultant, that's something you'll have that discussion with them as a part of that process or in the review process as you interview those consultants. But if we're going to go out and ask for them to come in, we need to get that scheduled and try to get them coming in with interviews right away.
Discussion. Counselor Flack.
So I absolutely agree that we need a third party. I think that it's just with the amount of workload we have now and the fact that we're also talking about adding more work potentially to department heads to cover, I think that just makes absolute sense. You know, so I do think that we should absolutely, you know, get out and get some proposals for those. As far as the interim goes, I just have really mixed feelings. I know in the Fire District, we had some good interims and we had some not-so-good interims. And of course, that was also, that was another body facing some turmoil. So, you know, I think that that's, that's a challenge. I think I would want to know if our department heads are comfortable, you know, whether it's rotating or having one person stepping up as interim. So I wouldn't want to just put that on somebody's shoulders without knowing how they feel. So I don't know that I can weigh in on that piece tonight without a little more direction, you know, from our staff.
Yeah, and I did forget to mention the cost of the consultants. ElCOG can do it for about $15,000. That's their full package doing everything. Now, there may be some additional expenditures for buying ads and multiple publications and things like that. The other consultants, Profman, Jensen, they're about 18,000 to 20,000 and then plus some expenditures. How many times do you have them come and do analysis with you and do workshops and things like that? Trying to get profiles put together and what kind of publications may change that a little bit? But that's the basic full package of what goes on, which was surprising to us. We thought it was going to be able to hire.
Counselor Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that is encouraging to hear. I was expecting in the 60s.
That's what we would think.
So, yeah, and I was already leaning towards a third party. In that, I think I'd like to, you know, look at those third-party options and I don't know if we can have kind of a profile of them, you know, what, what their value propositions are, like what if you really do get a better result potentially in a short amount of time with one over another. Otherwise, I wouldn't be opposed to the ElCOG doing that. And then I have similar, similar questions. I like the idea of our department heads taking that on, the interim role. But I would like to know if there's a willingness there for how long and so. how long, and so we can scope out a timeline.
And, you know, our department heads work together really well as a team, and so, you know, some of that's not going to be, it's not going to be all on them when they are acting, but typically, you need to have somebody who's recognized as the voice that's in charge. And that's probably more of what that role would be, as they work together as a team, and they, we can't say enough about how well they do work together. So, yeah, and with the consultants, and the actuaries, that would be one of the requests, is, hey, what is, what do you look like, how do you do this? What's your mode of going through the steps and the process? One of the things I think is useful, is you can see some differences in the materials that are presented, in the style, and the way it's written and presented, those would be important pieces to consider as well. All of the packages are also guaranteed that you will get somebody. You may not get somebody right off, but if you pay $15,000, and you go through the whole process, and there's not a selection, you keep going. They go until they get you somebody as a city manager. So, they guarantee that that's the cost, to get one. So if you go through the whole process, and you say, hey, when you're done, none of these work, they'll go back out again, and it's still under that same rule.
And Mr. Myers, they will come in and do a presentation for us?
We can put that in the proposal, and have them come in and actually do a presentation, as well as provide material.
Fantastic. Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor Salisbury. I, too, am a little daunted by taking this task on, so I'm really glad that it sounds like we're all leaning towards having a third-party come in. I like the idea of having them, you know, bid on the process, and tell us what they can do for us. I think that makes it a really good neutral party, they can weed out the folks that aren't qualified, you know, we can give them our parameters, and I think they'll do most of that work, in coming give us the final selection, which sounds really attractive. In the day-to-day, in the current, right now, Mr. Myers, if you are out of the office, if you're at a conference, or you're out, I believe that our interim, your assistant to city manager, takes on your role, is there any sort of clarity, whether that was written as the interim as well? Do we know anything? So we can go ahead and...
It's whoever I pick, so as I, if I'm gone for a period of time, I might say, hey, Fay, you're going to be in charge of stuff for a period of time, or there's nothing in the job descriptions that says this person is automatically the interim lawyer.
Excellent. Is it possible to hear from the folks that could be taking this interim seat? To see if they're interested, or...
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know if that's something you want to really worry about deciding right now, but it's a possibility.
Okay, so we don't have to pick the interim tonight?
No, no. And it's also a piece that you may want to visit with the consultants a little bit, too, because that may be a package, or a piece of the package, where they may have some people that would be willing to help assist the interim work. So, some of those, you know, I think Prophet has that, he has some former managers or others that are on staff to help with some of that as well.
Sorry, that led to one more question. So it sounds like this could be a fairly quick turnaround to get these requests for proposal, our next city council meeting is the middle of August?
Maybe not the next city council meeting, I don't know, we could get them in two weeks, but we could try.
Cool.
We'll try.
Thank you.
Counselor Stenning?
Thank you. I'd agree with the need to bring a third-party in, I think this is probably the most impactful thing we'll do as a council, and the cost seems like money well spent in that light. I wonder, can you speak to maybe, is there, and has there been, you know, kind of efforts already to build in redundancies, so that the knowledge and processes don't walk out the door with you? Can you kind of address how ready staff's going to be when you do step out?
We're trying to download some of that information, and dump it into appropriate people. We just got rid of the drawer in my office to IT, so that they're getting up to speed on the IT, on the fiber network and Wi-Fi stuff. So, we're continuing to try to do that, so that it's continued, there'll be a good smooth transition, there'll be people that'll know what's happening, and where to go, and who to talk to, yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Merriday?
I'm also leaning towards a third-party, because they also have extensive networks and connections to know, this would be a good fit, based on what we ask for, and what they know of our city.
Counselor Dyer?
Mayor, thank you. I'd support a third-party recruiter, someone who does this for a living. I am concerned that staff have a lot on their plates already, with, as a grant manager myself, I know how much time it takes to manage not only just projects, but then compliance, and different reporting requirements, I'm concerned about that. I have recently hired for a government position, and I tried it the old-school way, we'll just post it, and I'll share it, and I'm, I have a wide network, right? We'll just do it, and our HR people are great, and we had a very unsuccessful recruitment, and then you have to, you spend time with, dealing with the unsuccessful recruitment, and that, there is an opportunity cost, the longer that leadership position is vacant. So I am concerned, we do it right the first time, with a third-party vendor, who knows how to do this, who has those relationships? I look forward to a request for proposals process, where people can show us what's their value proposition, what's their experience, success rates, some of their packet materials. And I'm not quite sure about the interim position, I would also want to hear from staff, take their temperature a bit. I weigh in the pros and cons of bringing another new person in, sometimes then staff just spend a lot of time explaining to them how we do things, where you could just do it faster yourself, if you're rotating, so that's a concern of mine.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think so. If there's a consensus to do a third-party, we'll get that moving, and have that, hopefully something, some kind of bait, or information for interviews and stuff for that, too.
All right, well with that, meeting is adjourned.